All right, good evening, everybody. I will call to order the city council meeting for Thursday, July 9th. Our mayor, Nick, has the business commitment and will not be here tonight. Randy Sternad is on vacation. And Renee Gadelia will be joining us electronically by Zoom. So we welcome all of you who are also joining us electronically through our Zoom meeting. So if we'll, those that are here will stand and have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Ms. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mayor Abuosli. Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Ms. Gadelia.
Here.
Mr. Sternad.
And now we'll have a short moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we do not have any proclamations or oaths, nor do we have any presentations. So now it is time for the public forum. This is a section that is for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda, not associated with a public hearing. Rachel, do we have any?
One, Joe, if it's, I need the topic of the public comment so I know whether it's an agenda item or not.
Okay, so at this time, we're only, we're only taking this section for comments from the public. This is for items that are topics that are listed on the agenda, but not associated with a public hearing. There will be an opportunity at the end of our meeting for another public forum, at which time comments can be made from the public on any topic. So these, right now, this is for, this public forum is only for those topics that are on the current city council agenda.
The same with, with Janessa Carr. I'm not, you need to provide your name and address in the Q and A, as well as what the topic is. I think we have Kyle Martin with Martin Gardner Architecture. This will be related to the Carriage House item.
Okay. Kyle, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Wanted to give an update. We've had a lot of progress on the schedule for the house relocations. I've got a confirmed date for each house move. They are August 12th and September 15th for the second house. So those, those are dates that the house mover is targeting with getting sign-offs for utilities and tree trimming and having all those things executed prior around those dates. And I do, I just received confirmation from the excavator a few minutes ago that will be, we should be able to start digging foundations, pending weather, mid to late this coming week, so somewhere around the 15th to the 17th. Foundations will begin immediately after that. And the cure time for the foundations will leave approximately a week before that, August 12th house move. And then, yeah, so that September 15th house move date, that should leave at least, at least a few weeks for removing the foundations and filling in the soils for compaction for the library to start on October, October 1st. So a lot has come together in the last couple of days, and I just want to give that update. And we'll continue to periodically update as needed as we get closer to those dates.
Okay, Kyle, with the Gantt chart that was provided to us that's on our desk this evening, that talked about house move number one in July and house move number two in August. So are those preliminary dates?
Yeah, those, so the, the Gantt chart that you have, I'm not exactly sure which one it was, if it was from the last, if it was from the work session on Tuesday, that reflects more durations of time that was needed. And so, so everything kind of spread out a little bit, but it's, it's much more concrete now.
Okay, can you give us those two dates again for house one and house two?
Yep, house one is August 12th. And house, house two is September 15th.
All right. Well, those are, that's a much better report and assessment than we had received on Tuesday. So I think that certainly is going to increase the comfort level of everybody involved with both of those projects. Okay? All right?
Very good.
Thank, thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else online for this section of the public forum?
There is not.
All right. With that, then, we will move on to the agenda.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F9, resolutions 28581 through 28617, with what we'll be removing from the consent agenda, resolution number 28597.
Okay.
28597. Okay. Okay, so we got a motion, is there a second? Oh, Renee, sorry.
Second, sorry.
Sorry. I'm gonna have to listen a little closer with that different location for you. Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, resolutions 28581 through 28617, excluding resolution number 28597. Is there a discussion on any of those consent agenda items? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Renee has a question.
Oh, Renee, you got a question, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just curious why we're removing an item. I see what it is, but I'm just wondering if that's gonna come back. Are we waiting on paperwork, or did this not resolve this way?
It will be coming back. It should have been a temporary easement.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, it's related, Renee, it's related to the 14th Street project, reconstruction project, an easement on that street.
I'm good now, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Please say no. Consent agenda is approved. Okay, now we gotta go a ways into the agenda. Now we'll move into the regular agenda, starting with administrative services.
Your honor, I move to approve, make a motion to approve the following hold harmless agreement. Cocktails and Company bans in parking lot, July 17th through 18th, July 31st through August 1st, August 14th through August 15th, August 28th through August 29th, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., 625 Blair's Ferry Road, Marion. Cocktails and Company, 1625 Blair's Ferry Road.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the hold harmless agreement related to cocktails and company. This is one we had quite a bit of discussion a couple of weeks ago. Further comments or discussion from the city council?
I have a question, Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Tuesday, when we were talking about this, it seemed that, I guess, the owner of the bar, I'm not sure, but a gentleman's name was named, that he wasn't, he was not in agreement with our recommended police coverage, which we did based on the history of other events that have gone on there. So if, if we approve what's on the agenda currently, he still has to meet our requirement, right? We didn't change that, even though, you know, we, we understand his feeling, but we didn't make any changes to what we originally recommended. Is that correct?
The hold harmless agreement, Chief Kitz Miller did put as a condition that six officers must be at each event. So that is how the hold harmless currently states. I think the amendment last meeting was removing, was only issuing it for the first two events. So this, what's on the agenda would be with the condition of six officers at each event.
Okay, great, just wanted to confirm that, thank you.
Yes, yeah, it was originally submitted to us by cocktails and company, only requesting, and they feel there's only a need for two officers. Our police department still has the opinion it should be six, and that is the condition that we would be approving. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay. So we got, all those in favor of the motion to approve the hold harmless for cocktails, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to remove from table job description for deputy city manager. Second.
Okay, so we got a motion to remove the, to, from table job description for the deputy city manager, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your honor, I make a motion to receive and file job description for deputy city managers tabled on June 18, 2020.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion to receive and file the new job description for deputy city manager, is there any discussion? All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance number 20-08, approving for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Echo Hill Road urban renewal area pursuant to section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa, second consideration.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-08. Is there any comments or discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance 20-08, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The ordinance is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28618, approving fiscal year 2020, 2021, operating budget transfers.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28618. So we've all received this detail, and there's a number of transfers in that. Are there any comments or discussion related to this? Okay, if not, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28618, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 28619 relating to the financing of a proposed project to be undertaken by the city of Marion, Iowa, establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28619. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution 28619, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28620, approving the disposal of surplus city property.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. And just for those that are watching this electronically, the surplus city property that we are talking about is an old ladder fire truck that is in need of repairs, and we just invested a million dollars a few years ago in a brand-new ladder truck, and that will meet the needs of the city. So this will be sold, hopefully, and find a home to some other city that can make use of it. So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28620. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 28621, approving contract change orders number 001 and 002 to the contract with OPN Architects Incorporated regarding Fire Station 1 and Headquarters Design Fee in the amounts of $15,000 and $10,000, $10,072 respectively.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28621 related to some change orders for the construction of our fire station. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving resolution number 28621, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28622, approving a three-year agreement with Insight Public Sector regarding Microsoft licensing in the amount of $162,831.12.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28622 related to the Microsoft licensing agreement, discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 28622, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Your honor, I move to direct staff to develop a project plan for potential community-wide Wi-Fi project. Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to develop a project plan for potential community-wide Wi-Fi project. We had a lot of discussion on this Tuesday. So are there any additional comments or discussion that anybody wishes to have on this? Sounds like we analyzed it pretty well on Tuesday and determined that there certainly is a great need throughout the community, and it would be utilized. So all those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28623, approving purchase of police canine trained in patrol and explosive detection skills from Von Litch Kennels in the amount of $15,929.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28623 for the purchase of a police canine. Just to let the rest of the public know, this canine will be replacing a current dog that we have that has served very faithfully, and unfortunately has came down with some health problems. His name is Fedor. So we will miss Fedor, but we will look forward to having a new police dog. Okay, all those in favor of this, of approving resolution number 28623, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 28624, approving purchase in agreement with Raycom Corporation regarding USDD Fire Station Alerting System at Fire Station Number 1 in the amount of $64,444.62.
Second.
Okay, just for the public's benefit, again, on Tuesday, Chief Cravall talked about this item. This is needed at our new fire station number one so that all of the three fire stations are linked together with their communications and 9/11 system. So, so we, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28624, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved. Okay, now we'll move on to, now it's time for a public hearing regarding the Grand Avenue Spur North on existing trail to, to the north side of the Marion Boulevard Bridge over Indian Creek, PCC Trail, C Mar Phase 2. The public hearing is now open, and Mike will give us an update on this issue.
Yeah, so this is part of the C Mar project that goes from the 7th and 7th roundabout all the way to the Marion and Cedar Rapids Corporate Limits. This phase of the project paves the existing lime trail from under Marion Boulevard through Thomas Park and down to almost the T at Menards. That northern-southerly T by Menards will not be paved at this time because we need that access for the sanitary sewer project. Bids were received by the DOT, and there were six of them, the low bid being Midwest Concrete at $721,887.62, which is 92.3% of the engineer's estimate. So staff is recommending approving the contract with Midwest Concrete.
And just a note to the public, when this project does start, it's gonna be a tremendous improvement, but unfortunately, that section of the trail will be closed while those improvements are taking place. So at this time, we will open the public hearing up for comments either in favor or against. So we'll give that a little while for Rachel to see if there's any public comments.
I have not received any for this topic.
Okay. And none have been received prior to this meeting?
No, sir.
Okay. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28625, accepting bids and awarding contract to Midwest Concrete Incorporated regarding the Grand Avenue Spur North on existing trail to north side of Marion Boulevard Bridge over Indian Creek, PCC Trail, C Mar Phase 2 in the amount of $721,887.62.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28625 relating to paving a large portion of our trail between Thomas Park and over by Menards. Although, any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28625, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved. Okay, so we now have a public hearing regarding the 20, 2020 sidewalk ramp project. The public hearing is now open.
So as part of the city's ADA transition plan, we have to go into parts of town and fix the existing ramps that are out there to make them ADA compatible. And so we take on as many intersections as we can. With this one, we did receive four bids with the low bid from Midwest Concrete at $203,448. This was 111.2% of the engineer's estimate and is also over budget. However, what staff is recommending is proceed with the acceptance of the contract, and then we will come back to city council with a change order, removing one or two intersections to get it within budget. And that way, we can proceed with as many intersections again as, as possible to continue with our ADA transition plan. It does have a late start date of August 10th, 50 working days and $300 per day in liquidated damages.
Just out of curiosity, how many more years will it take before this project is accomplished?
The last calculation that it was done at the current funding level was 30 years, and by then, the specifications will likely change, and so we will be starting over.
So we'll continue to march on and make progress every year. All right. So at this time, the public hearing is now open for public comments, either for or against the 2020 sidewalk ramp project. Rachel, are there any comments out there?
I do not have any comments for this topic.
All right.
My office has not received any, either.
You've not received any, very good, thank you. With that, the public hearing regarding the 2020 sidewalk ramp project is now closed, and we'll move on to the resolution.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 28626, accepting bids and awarding contract to Midwest Concrete Incorporated regarding the 2020 sidewalk ramp project in the amount of $203,448. Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28626 related to the sidewalk ramp project, any discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 28626, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved. We now have another public hearing regarding the 2020 Marion Fire Station traffic signals. The public hearing is now open. And Mike, if you can give us a quick update on that?
Yep, so this is the intersection of Tower Terrace and Irish Drive. These signals that are put up will be similar to the signals that are on 8th Avenue, so they will be emergency operation only. So when the lights and sirens are operated by the police or, or fire vehicles, the preempt system will turn on. Otherwise, they will remain green for Tower Terrace and red for Irish Drive. In the future, when the traffic warrants are met, this will be modified to become a fully actuated signal where it will actually have timing and, and cameras to detect when it needs to change. But those warrants need to be there in order to have that. So right now, this is basically because of the new fire station, and so the response time is not hindered by being able to get off of Irish Drive onto Tower Terrace. This project was put together by Holland Hall. We did have three bids come in with the low bid, KNW Electric, at $237,920. It was 116% of the engineer's estimate, but the budget was $300,000, so it is under the budget. And so we are recommending proceeding with this project. It does have a late start date of April 5th of 2021 because it takes about six months to get those signals in anyways because of the manufacturing. And that way, once we get those contracts underway, then they can start in the spring once they're here, and then we have all the parts. There are 30 working days and $300 per day in liquidated damages.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we will open the public hearing up for any public comments, either for or against the 2020 fire station traffic signals.
I have not received any comments.
Okay, we've not received any comments, and your office has not received any as well?
Correct.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number 28627, accepting bids and awarding contract to KNW Electric, Inc., regarding the 2020 Marion Fire Station traffic signals in the amount of $237,920.
Second.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28627 related to the Marion Fire Station traffic signals, any discussion? Well.
So Mike, fire station is supposed to open before the late start date, correct? Isn't that supposed to be in operation at the end of this year?
Deb, are you on the call that you can answer that call?
Because my question is, are we gonna have a time where there's no lights and stations open?
I don't believe so, I don't know if Deb can.
No, there shouldn't be any time that there would be no, no light.
When's the station supposed to open?
We won't be moving until January or February.
What's the installation date? Can you go back a slide?
Late start is April.
Late start is April 5th.
So if, if the poles are in, and we don't have the late, I mean, if the fire station's open in January and the poles are in, we can say, hey, you guys need to go out there and put them up, or is it?
Now with the late start date, how it is, they have to start until the 5th. Now, not to say that they don't get the footings in this fall and, and put them up during the winter, that's up to the contractor and whether they come in, but they don't have to start until the 5th.
Is there a way to have them do that so that?
Not the way that it was bid, if we want to rebid it, we can.
Chief, what, what we're kind of looking at here is, it seems there may be a potential gap from the time you are moving into your new fire station and the potential late start date of getting those signals installed. So do you have any comments on how we can react to that?
Yes, I wasn't aware of the late start date, so I'm sorry for that. I don't really think there'll be a problem. I don't think the traffic level there is at the point like 8th Avenue or Highway 151 where we presently are pulling out. I think until that date, we should be all right.
So you do acknowledge then and are ready or will be prepared to handle a short, potential short period of time with no traffic lights there?
Yes, I think we'll be able to do that. I don't see the traffic levels being that much of a problem in that area at this time. But depending on when the Y opens, that'll make a difference.
That is supposed to open in January.
Okay.
Now, so does that give you, based on that, does this late start date give you any concern, or do we need to rebid it with a different start date?
Can I just interject that when school is, you know, getting ready to start and letting out, that is definitely gonna increase the traffic for that, you know, 30 to 45-minute period, if, if school is even in session in person. But it does get kind of tangly up there when school lets out and, and in the morning.
Actually, the whole purpose really is to, with these lights, what, what it does is, is it, it it helps us to respond faster. When, when the light comes on and everybody sees the light, then they start to slow down and stop, and we can go on our way. What will happen if we don't have lights is we'll have to pause maybe longer for people to make sure that people do notice us and have stopped before we pull out. So it just may delay our response time a little bit, but that's really the reason for it. It's not only just safety, but it's also for our response times.
So Chief, are you okay with this contract with that start date then?
Yes.
Grant.
Go ahead. Mike, if we were to rebid this, two questions. What would you expect to happen with the project price? And would there then be a, a change in the working days? What, what impacts are there if we rebid it?
Sure. So typically, a bidding process takes a month itself, so we're going to see higher prices. You have at least a six-month lead time to get the polls here. So I don't see a positive in delaying this.
Your Honor.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Deb.
I actually knew that part of the process, that it would take actually longer if we rebid to get those lights, so I would much rather go with this, and that's the reason for my decision.
Okay, sounds like that's the better decision. Rebidding it would probably result in a more unsatisfactory set of circumstances and cost and schedule.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion on this item? Okay. All those, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28627, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance Number 20-09, amending Chapter 175, Section 175.07 of the Code of Ordinances relating to subdivision regulations, maintenance bonds, and this is the second consideration.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve ordinance Number 20-09 related to the Code of Ordinances and its subdivision regulations. Any discussion or comments? Not all those in favor of approving ordinance Number 20-09, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The ordinance is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to receive, file, discuss, and refer to TAC a request for a school crossing at 35th Street and 35th Ave. from Lynnmar School District.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion to approve, to receive, file, and discuss a TAC request related to 35th Street and 35th Avenue crossing. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to concur with the TAC report regarding a request for a school crossing at 35th Street and 35th Avenue from the Lynnmar School District.
Second.
Okay, so we now have the motion to concur with the TAC report regarding the school crossing at 35th Street and 35th Avenue. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to receive, file, discuss, and refer to TAC a request to update the wayfinding signs for the Marion High School and football and track complex from Marion Independent School District.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to receive, file, and discuss this request from the Marion Independent School District. Any comments or discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve, I'm sorry, I make a motion to concur with TAC report regarding a request to update the wayfinding signs for the Marion High School. No, this is a, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
For the high school and football track complex, Marion Independent School District.
My mistake.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second for the motion to concur with the TAC report related to the Marion Independent School District request. Any discussion? All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to receive, file, and discuss letter from the Solid Waste Agency regarding the grading project for the Phase V bulk excavation, Garrett Prestigard and Carmen McShane, 1954 County Home Road.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to receive, file, and discuss the letter from the Solid Waste Agency. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution Number 28628, approving contract and bond with L.L. Pelling Company Incorporated regarding the 2020 HMA resurfacing project in the amount of $1,082,991.50.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28628 related to our 2020 HMA resurfacing project for $1,082,000. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28628, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28629, approving change order Number 10 with L.L. Pelling Company Incorporated regarding the 2019 runway 1735 reconstruction project regarding tree removals in the amount of $3,248.40.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28629. Just a side comment for the public. Drive out by the airport, all of the resurfacing and blacktop is done, and hopefully, the airport will be open for business in a couple of more weeks. So that'll be exciting. That's been quite a long time since that has not seen planes landing out there, and I'm sure they will appreciate the much wider runway and its lighting. Any discussion on this item? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28629, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved. Now we'll move on to community development.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution Number 28630, approving the Commons at English Glen Fifth Edition Final Site Development Plan for property located north of 29th Avenue and east of Winchester Drive Extended, Robson Homes Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28630 related to the Commons at English Glen Fifth Edition Final Site Development Plan. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, if not, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28630, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved. At this time, we'll have a public hearing regarding an amendment to the future land use map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from single-family detached residential to singly, single-family attached for property located south of Boyson Road and east of Albernett Road. The public hearing is now open. And Dave, go ahead and give us some comments and update on this, please.
Yep, very briefly, I'm just going to address the two questions that were left at the end of Tuesday night's meeting. First question was, is the property going to be in HOA? Confirming with the developer, it will be, the property will be in an HOA, so it will handle the driveway, snow, sidewalks, no removal. It's not handle the street removal, though. The second question was the zoning. What was it? And what is, what was it proposed in the zoning map? It's currently a zone planned development residential. On our proposed map, it was planned development residential, so nothing had changed from where we were to what we were proposing. So I think that was the second question that was asked, I didn't have an answer for on Tuesday. The Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the project.
So as we understand it, the significant change in this is, this is basically taking 18 condominiums, which were going to be on nine lots, and moving each condominium to its own lot.
Correct, with a, with a common shared wall.
With a common shared wall on the condos, right. Okay, so the HOA, I can think that answers some of the key questions we had on Tuesday. Okay. Okay, so we'll open, at this time, we'll open this public hearing up for public comments, either for or against this amendment.
So we have Jason Stone with Holland Hall, 1860 Boyson Road. I think we'll unmute him now.
Okay, go ahead, Jason.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. I just wanted to add a little bit more to what Dave had mentioned. That's, I think it's to the understanding that there's, with this proposal, there's no additional units being added from the previously approved preliminary plat. The density will stay the same, and like you mentioned, that it's just going to be an addition, some, some additional lots are going to be added so they can share a common, so the units can share a common lot line. The, the site is, is zoned for a PUD, so, and with the improvements that we're planning on, the streets are only going to be solely for the services, the water and sewer services. So the street construction is, for the most part, going to stay as is. Any street construction that would be required is going to be to add services to the new lot lines, because they're not going to line up 100% with what was previously done. So that's all I have to add, just wanted to add those few things. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any other comments from the public?
No, there is not.
Dave, has your department received any comments related to this?
I briefly talked to Hunter Scogman via email after Tuesday night's meeting, and he was just clarified everything I had just clarified with you folks.
Okay, very good. Okay, hearing no other public comments, we will close the public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28631, approving amendment to the future land use map of the Marion Comprehensive Plan from single-family detached residential to single-family attached for property located south of Boyson Road and east of Albernett Road, Midwest Development Company.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28631 related to the future land use map for property south of Boyson Road and east of Albernett Road. Any more discussion on this item? Okay, if not, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28631, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved. Okay, at this time, we have another public hearing regarding Bowman Meadows Eighth Edition Preliminary Site Development Plan for property located south of Boyson Road and east of Albernett Road. The public hearing is now open. So this is kind of a continuation of the same property. Same comments will be, will be appropriate. So we'll leave this public hearing open for just a little bit. Are there any public, so at the, at this time, anybody from the public can make comments for or against?
Yeah, I'm not receiving any comments.
Okay, receiving no public comments, at this time, we will close this public hearing and move on to the resolution.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution Number 28632, approving Bowman Meadows Eighth Edition Preliminary Site Development Plan for property located south of the Boyson Road and east of Albernett Road by Midwest Development Company.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28632, approving the Bowman Meadows Eighth Edition Preliminary Site Development Plan. Any further discussion? If not, go ahead.
Your Honor, yes, your honor, just a question.
Yes.
The, the way those condominiums are situated, just remind me, do they, the common wall between the condos, isn't that effectively then a lot line?
Correct. The, the center wall is the property line, and, and that's why it's called the zero lot line. Then all the other sides of the building are, meet the traditional setbacks for the, for the zoning.
Okay.
And that's the only reason it's a planned development. We don't have any mechanism to allow zero lot line condos with the property line on, through the wall, other than planned development.
Yeah, okay. And the advantage to the owners is, they get their own lot?
Some may think so. It's, it's actually financing. The banks, they like that lot attached to the condo, and they just have an easier time financing the, the sales.
Okay. Little, little clearer title and abstract.
Yeah, I, I think it's all about how, a lot of times, you have large condominiums, you have to sell a certain amount before the banks get a little more comfortable with it, and this way, you're actually selling a, you're selling its own unit on its own lot. It's no different than a single-family house in terms of financing, is my understanding.
You're correct.
Will, Will has confirmed that comment. All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, if not, all those in favor of Resolution Number 28632, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28633, approving Bowman Meadows Eighth Edition Preliminary Plat for property located south of Boyson Road and east of Albernett Road, Midwest Development Company.
Second.
We have, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28633, and this is approving the Bowman Meadows Eighth Edition Preliminary Plat. Any questions or comments? Okay, if not, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28633, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution Number 28634, approving Carriage Corner Revised Final Site Development Plan for 3569th Street, Marion, Iowa, Seven Hills East, LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Resolution Number 28634 related to the Carriage Corner Revised Final Site Development Plan. So we had a lot of comments and questions, discussion on Tuesday. Any further comments or discussion on that tonight?
I just want to say thank you for making available the Gantt chart on the project that helped understand the scope complement, as well as the dependencies that were critical to getting those houses moved, so thanks.
Okay. Okay, with that, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28634, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28635, approving Bridge Creek Fifth Edition Final Plat, a memorandum of agreement for property located north of Winslow Road and east of Larkspur Drive, Mooney Engle Land Company, LLC.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28635. Again, we looked at this in detail on Tuesday. Any questions or comments? So a lot of the work has already been done. Will.
I, I meant, I asked the other day, Tuesday, if the pine trees were going to stay, and I drove out there, and they're still there, and it looks like there's room for those lots to go in in the pine trees to stay behind them, so, which I would assume they would probably do, because that would increase the value of those lots, too.
Aren't those pine trees really on, on that Lot C, right near that Lot C that we're talking about that is?
Correct. I'm not sure if they're on the line or one side or the other, but they're running north-south right along that big Lot C there, so there's, they look pretty healthy. I drove out there myself after the meeting and took a look at them, so.
Well, yeah, I've been out there a number of times, and if those trees are healthy, that is, you know, the people, the lots right next to that, that's going to give them some nice windbreak, as well as shade at different parts of the day, so there's no other trees out there. Those are the only trees in that entire development, and I would think it would add value to those lots that are right next to them, so.
Because the retention pond's right behind it.
Right behind it, exactly.
Won't be able to see it with those trees in the...
Yep, that makes those lots, I don't know what these prices are at, but I would probably, well, I won't tell them how to do, they, they know exactly what they're doing? All right. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28635, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved. Okay, at this time, we'll move into other department discussion. We've got one item listed to discuss, have a discussion regarding fireworks. Who is leading that? listed to discuss, have a discussion regarding fireworks. Who is leading that?
This was added on the request of the mayor. Council received numerous emails with concerns about fireworks. So I know Councilmember Harper also suggested having a discussion. So I guess if you guys have any comments or questions?
Well, let's go around the room. I mean, I personally received directly one email which I responded to. So that's all I received directly, aside from the ones that you sent us. How many did you receive directly, Grant?
I had two conversations from inquiries that were sent in to council. And it was, the general theme to the comments was the duration of the fireworks, the intensity, and the subsequent disturbance to pets and neighbors, which is kind of a common theme, I think, to all of the, all of the correspondence we received.
So did you receive any, those were emails I think you responded to, that all of us were copied on? Did you have any directly to you?
No, nothing separate.
Okay, I had one.
I did. I had one. And the concern was primarily that it was happening outside our allowed days and times in which we allow fireworks here in this city. So general frustration, but was really understanding we have an ordinance that allows, right, I think, is it July 4th, if I'm right? And maybe is it December 31st? Those are two days. And that they were experiencing fireworks outside those days and times, so.
Okay, Will, anything?
None direct, other than what?
Renee?
Nothing other than what we all got via email.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm not sure exactly what Nick was going to talk about. I think he certainly wants to open this up for discussion. What we've done in past years, you know, what I have seen on the news, what I have heard, I don't know what the police department report would be, but certainly my personal perspective is, I thought overall, there was a few fireworks done outside of July 4th, but I think in my, at least in my neighborhood, they were pretty limited. But on July 4th, from 8 o'clock to 10:30, the sky was lit up and it was loud, louder than the past couple of years. So I would have to attest to that, and most people I have talked to have kind of given the same comments. So what I have heard is that it was predicted the fireworks were going to be heavier than usual because there were not any fireworks displays anywhere. People have a pent-up demand because of COVID-19. They were wanting to do something to celebrate. So whether this was a much heavier-than-usual year, I guess that kind of is my observation and assumption that's going on. What we usually do if we have a discussion on this, we usually would get a report from the police department, which would have a number of comments and/or comparisons on how this compared to prior years, what Cedar Rapids is seeing. I've always interested in Cedar Rapids because since year one, they have banned fireworks completely. But I have a good friend of mine who went over to Cedar Rapids to watch fireworks, and they said there were plenty of fireworks in Cedar Rapids. And they said, actually, coming down Highway 100, looking towards Marion, it was kind of pretty seeing all the fireworks. So there was a lot going on. So Chad, Chad has some comments and maybe update for us on this.
Good evening.
Thank you.
I knew you guys were probably going to have some questions, so I asked our data analyst to put together how many calls for service we took this year. And this is up through July 5th. And I was actually surprised. We had 162 calls for service through July 5th.
Okay.
Whereas last year, we had 158. So it really didn't go up that substantially.
Okay.
Now, if you want to compare a little bit when fireworks were made legal again to possess, in 2017, we handled 311 calls. So I agree with your assessment, Councilman Jensen. I think that people were just looking to burn off some steam. I think a lot of people didn't call. And I'll be honest, I think our officers gave quite a few people breaks, too. I think they understand that this has been, 2020's been a little difficult thus far. And I think that people, I think the officers are kind of giving people breaks, too. A lot of them, they never end up, they actually go and they can't locate them and people are done by the time, they probably know we're getting called, so they end it and go inside. But I know we had given 17 warnings, too. So I think we had encountered a few. But again, I think officers were trying to be respectful of the conditions that everybody's facing right now. So we also, just so you are all aware, we did a compliance check again with the vendors for any underage selling. There were, the fire department had advised us, there were three licensed vendors this year, and none of them sold to our underage persons. So that was good. I think usually we do get at least one or two that sell, which is always discouraging because we don't want to see that, so.
Are they still required to give the insert saying when it's legal to set them off? I know that would happen one year at least.
I don't know for sure. Deb, Deb might be able to answer. I know the fire department's pretty involved with the tents and the restrictions on the fireworks selling. But I don't, I don't know if she can answer that. I will also tell you that you probably all saw the press release. We did have a major fireworks injury out on 62nd Street. That was, that was pretty gruesome, pretty severe. Luckily, the gentleman, he did survive, but he has some significant injuries. So that's always unfortunate, but not uncommon either, so.
Chief Krebel, are you still online? Can you give us some comments related to what the fire department saw regarding the fireworks?
Yes. Fortunately, we had no structured fires or grass fires this year. We did very well in comparison to other cities in Iowa. The fire chiefs always meet after the 4th and we, I got their reports from the other cities, and Marion did very, very well compared to others. I did get some, we did get some calls for complaints at the stations. Mostly, that was for just the noise, pets, the things, same things that I think you all have mentioned already were the complaints. As for injuries, we only had the one critical injury. We were called for no other injuries. As for handing out the times and dates, to my knowledge, they were to do that. So whether or not they did that, I'm not sure, but they were supposed to do that.
Okay. Just a couple other comments for the public. Once in a while, there are questions about why doesn't the city Marion ban the sale of fireworks completely? And the answer to that is we cannot. What we have done is we have limited the sale or the places in which they can be sold. So if you remember, a few years ago, we were seeing tents with fireworks sales on several places along Seventh Avenue. They were all around the city. So we have limited the sale of those two areas that have to be zoned industrial. So that's why there are only three in the city. So that has been a substantial reduction from what it was in 2017 and 2018. The other question that has came up in the past when we've discussed fireworks is can we limit what they can sell? And the answer to that is also we cannot limit what they can sell. So I think this year, we probably saw, at least I saw, maybe a few more of the louder ones, some of the, I would say larger fireworks that went, went quite a ways up in the, in the air. So those are a couple of things. There are certain things that the city can do, but there's some things that we cannot do. So hopefully we'll clarify some of those aspects related to fireworks.
Mr. Mayor Protem, just a comment on that. Just, just to clarify why we can't limit the sale and what they are selling is because that's all founded in state law, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct.
Yeah.
That is state law where they have to be, every city has to be able to allow the sale of them. But what the cities can do is restrict where they can be sold. And that was the real problem we had back in 2017 when this first hit the city. The state approved the fireworks sales, I think at the end of May, and all of a sudden, bam, cities could not react to it. And that was an absolute crazy year where people were shooting fireworks off for two or three weeks. So I think by restricting it to the one day and a little bit on New Year's Eve, we're always going to, even if we ban fireworks completely, there is always going to be a lot of fireworks going off. Hans, just look at Cedar Rapids and see what happened over there. There was a tremendous amount of fireworks in Cedar Rapids. So banning it, although it sounds like it's going to restrict it in a great deal, in many ways, it really doesn't. So at least by having the ordinance on when they can do it, I think, at least in my area, they were pretty good about keeping it primarily to the 4th and within the hours allowed. So.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, Chief.
Yes. I just want to emphasize, too, that the only way to change this situation is, and this is what I tell most of the citizens that talk with me, is the only way to try to change that is to contact your state legislator. It's a state law and we can't control it.
That is correct. Thank you, Chief. Will has a comment?
Just something I noticed with the sale of them, and I don't know how it works with permits to get them, but as far as parking, I drove by one tent that apparently didn't have enough parking because all the people were parking in the street, on a street where there is no parking allowed, and it was 20 cars in the street. So I don't know if that's something that is looked at with the permit when they're issued, if there's enough parking for the tents or not, but maybe look at that further for the locations that they're allowed.
Yeah, there's some people also in the public thinking the city allows the sale of this because we're making money. By the time we add up our cost by the fire department to inspect the tents and the police department to manage the situation, we're not making any money. We're putting an additional cost into making sure that what is being done is being done in as safe a way as we can and also in as about a restrictive manner as we can, so.
What is the permit?
Sorry, Renee?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime into something that Chief Krebel said, and that is, it's an election year. If this is something you care about, ask people who are running what they believe in. And if you really care about it, vote that way. This is how you change things if you're looking to do it. That's it.
Good comment. Grant?
Yes. What does a permit cost? Not much.
I believe the only permit they need is a tent permit, and is that $50?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, Chief.
Yes, they only pay for the tent permit. We do not charge for permits for our inspections of the fireworks stands or their applications for those. That goes strictly to the state.
To add on to that, we are not allowed to charge for those items, which is why we don't. And that's been decided by a court case. So that's not something that is negotiable at this time.
Okay, so a key takeaway for the public from our discussion tonight?
Your Honor.
If you want fireworks changed or banned, get hold of your legislators. Colette?
Just point of clarification. So the state dictates that whether we, that we have to allow folks to sell fireworks.
Correct.
But they do not dictate whether we allow those fireworks to be used within city limits. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
So we're talking about a couple of different things here. I think that's important if folks are listening to this, that they understand that there's sort of two issues at hand right now.
Yep. So, yeah, so Colette is correct. So there's two issues. One is, is can the city do anything to ban the sale of fireworks? The answer to that is no, we can only be restrictive as to where they're sold. And we are as restrictive as we possibly can by limiting that to the industrial areas. The second question is, can we ban the use of fireworks? And the city does have that discretion. Cedar Rapids does not allow it, Hiawatha does. I think in the same manner and timeframe that the city Marion does, so.
Your Honor, just one more item on that, that there have been discussions on the state level as to changing the state code to make it so that we cannot restrict the location of sales. There have also been some discussions about making it so that cities cannot ban the use of fireworks. I'm not aware of any traction those discussions have gained at this time, but it is something that has been discussed. So just one more plug to use your right to vote if you feel strongly on this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks, Jen. Any further discussion regarding fireworks? All right. If not, we'll now move on to our public forum. I know that we have, the city has received a number of emails and comments related to the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. So the comments that we've received are very numerous. So instead of, and all of those comments that have been sent into the city have been copied and sent to everybody on the city council. So everybody has those in hand and in their email website. So just to make sure that those are all given some visibility, what we'll do at this time is Rachel, our city clerk, will show each of those on the screen and give the individual's name and address so that those are recognized. And then after we do that piece of it, we will open the mic up to public comments. Go ahead, Rachel.
So again, these are all comments that we received in writing prior to the meeting. So the first one on the screen is from Heather Reese Kitter at 2595 Fifth Avenue, Unit A, and it's in support of the Marion Alliance. Next one is Katie Smith, 2190 Seventeenth Avenue, and again, in support of the Marion Alliance. Angelica Bonada, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that last name. She's also, will be speaking. She's, or asked to speak. She's on the call, but. Lindsay Croats, 137 Marion Boulevard, Suite B. She's also in support of the Marion Alliance. Connor Quaid, 1530 Henderson Drive, again, in support of the Marion Alliance. Sarah Norland, 1530 Country Club Drive, in support of the Marion Alliance. Ivy Lance, she, I did get her address. It was 1855 Henderson Drive, and again, in support of the Marion Alliance.
Okay, so at this time, again, I'll talk about what the conditions are for the public forum. So this time is set aside for comments from the public. You need to understand that the city council will not be taking any action on any comments due to the meeting, at this time, at this meeting, due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but we may be able to do so at a future meeting. And also, discussion by the city council is generally very, very limited. So the purpose of this is to open the public forum up for any comments that you wish to have. So at this time, Rachel, if you will, open the mic up. Also, we, we ask you to restrict your comments to five minutes. Please refrain, refrain from repeating what has been said before. You do not involve personalities or make derogatory comments. Be as factual as possible. Once allowed to speak, you will no longer have the opportunity to speak to the city council unless a member of the city council directs a question to you. So we'll go ahead and start the open mic for the public forum.
So the first one will be from Joe Pearson at 1210 Starry Drive.
Hey, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm Joe Pearson, checking in this evening also as an ally of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. I'm a retired white lady who's working proactively to learn about racial inequity in our community. And I'm sorry to have discovered that there is plenty of it. I've been attending and marching in the rallies, both here and in Cedar Rapids, and I'm trying to be an active listener. It's surprising and discouraging to learn how many racist or unjust things happen here every day that whites do not understand or even notice, how differently we see the world because of our historical position of power and control, and how little credence we give to the voices of people of color. Because most of you also are white, I would like to encourage you to spend time with these young people who are advocating for social justice in our community in ways it's likely you have not imagined. It's been exciting to me to watch this group step up and work to become community leaders. I hope you will encourage them in their efforts and listen to their perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
The next. The next person will be Janessa Carr on behalf of the Marion Alliance. She is in Marion, Iowa, but asks that her address be kept private.
Go ahead, Janessa.
Hi, I just wanted to take the time to introduce Mayor, also known as the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity, and just talk a little bit about the vision and our mission moving forward in Marion. First of all, we're all residents of Marion. We all are deeply invested in Marion and hope to see Marion move in a positive direction and just to be more progressive, you know, regarding race and racial equity. We really want to see racial equity in all systems within Marion. I think a lot of times people think that we're only concerned about police reform, but we're here to say that we care about reform in law enforcement, in healthcare, in education, child welfare, the economy here in Marion. Like, those are all our concerns. Right now, our demands seem to be geared towards just police, but we really are about making sure that Marion is a safe place for people of color. We've, you know, heard from lots of people of color about moving out of Marion and just this place not being very welcoming. And for many people who are not of color, they see Marion as a place that is very welcoming, it's very safe and very inclusive, but that's not the narrative for people of color, even such as myself. And so we really want to partner with you guys, and I know that you can't respond right now, but I just wanted to formally introduce us, and we're really, really looking forward to further conversations with you guys.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Janessa.
Yep.
The next one will be from Sophia Joseph. Again, she's Marion resident, but asked to keep her address private.
Sophia, go ahead. Sophia?
Okay, hello?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, I don't know what I was doing wrong. Good evening. I'm Sophia Joseph, co-founder of Marion Alliance for Racial Equity, and I'm really just going to discuss and bring you our, you know, they're called demands, but last night, somebody on the Civil Rights Commission said, really, they're not demands. They are things that we really should be doing to make our community better and to solve some of our problems. So while they might be called demands, really, they're just action steps, and I think the first steps in making Marion a better community for everybody. The first one is kind of twofold. Racial profiling and stops is a huge problem. It's, I don't think we've had a single person of color that hasn't told us that that's the number one problem in Marion. And the data that we got last night from the Civil Rights Commission was that over 16% of stops in Marion involve people that are black, but only 2.5% of the population. So I think those, those numbers speak volumes. We think the best solution would be a citizens review board made up of a diverse board who have the authority to require and analyze data. And we do believe that you all have the authority to help make that happen, if not make it happen. Number two is to decriminalize marijuana, which means to make any current misdemeanor that is directly tied to marijuana no longer a criminal offense. And all felonies that would have been a felony charge should be moved down to a misdemeanor, and this should be retroactive, striking all misdemeanors from records and moving all felonies down to a misdemeanor if people have had them in the past. Marijuana, I'm sure you all are aware that Lynn County, well, Iowa ranks fifth worst in the nation for racial disparities, and Lynn County is among the worst in Iowa. A black person in Lynn County has 9.7 times greater chance of getting a marijuana charge than a white person, and that is with almost equal usage rates. In fact, studies shows 1% to 2% more whites use it than blacks. As a financial advisor and somebody that literally sells marijuana stocks and is constantly in rooms where money and these things are being talked about, marijuana is no longer even a taboo subject. So the fact that we have fathers ripped away from their homes, people that have to not have the housing opportunities, the education opportunities, the income opportunities, having so many things ripped away from their lives while, you know, senators and congress are literally making millions off of marijuana, it's beyond unacceptable and reprehensible, quite frankly. And I think the fact that our conversation in Iowa keeps centering around how we can make money off of it is just completely ignoring the human aspect of it. I know that that's not within your jurisdiction, but certainly Marion does have the capabilities to quit focusing on marijuana and to quit making those arrests. And I do believe Cedar Rapids and Des Moines have already started to voice support for this. And I do believe we are in a coalition that involves, we're forming a coalition across the state with many different towns in order to better, you know, go towards the state legislators. But I do believe that if towns across Iowa come out in support of this change, then you can't convince me that that's not going to speak volumes at the state level. And the next one is to make Marion more welcome, inclusive, inclusive and diverse and respectful. And we believe that kind of the first step in that process is eight hours per year, per city employee of implicit bias and diversity training. Really, there needs to be a cultural shift in Marion, and this isn't going to be an overnight thing, and it's going to take steps and progress towards it. The next one, and we do believe that you guys have direct, can directly help support that. The next one is to open doorways to make voting easier. I've been to every rally in Cedar Rapids and Marion, and I've spoken to so many people, and voting comes up just again and again and again. We have had multiple complaints about people being harassed by the police when they were doing get out the vote efforts or caucusing for specific candidates. While that's not acceptable, it's also not acceptable to suppress people's voting rights. So we really feel like, we keep on talking about, let's quit supporting, suppressing voter rights, but in reality, we need to be having a conversation of how to open these doorways. Certainly, if we started voting today, it would be an online process, and you would log in the week of voting, you know, every time, and it's about time that we, you know, you can't say it's because of security. We do all kinds of things on the computers, plus the voting stations are hooked up to the internet. So really, I think it just comes down to tradition and suppression. And that, some of those things, you guys can help on a local level, and other things, I think that you could certainly support us and voice support, and we will take it to the proper officials and continue to fight for that one. The next one is a mental health liaison that is available 24/7, would probably be riding with an officer at all times, and can respond to different calls where truly an officer might not be the best one trained to approach the situation, or quite frankly, you know, somebody might just be fearful of a police officer, and that could really escalate a situation without needing to be. We do think that that person should be independent of the police force, that that funding should come from funding that did go to the police department, but should not, that person should not be trained or fully submerged in that culture. We want to make sure that they keep that, that independence and that, you know, that training that they come into this position with. And then the last one, and I do believe that you guys can, that one's within your authority. The last one, I know it's maybe a little politically touchy for you all, but Jerry Vander Sandin has, you know, been in charge while we have these horrific ratios, and, you know, wrote a column, I'm sure we're all aware of, where he blamed black people for these racial disparities, which essentially what you're telling me then is that the black people that live in this area are worse than the black people that live nearly everywhere else in the United States of America. If you are just justifying our horrific numbers by saying it's their fault, then you are saying that we just have the worst black people. And I mean, what a horrific and racist thing to say and completely inaccurate. But I don't know how we can truly make change in our community while we have our head prosecutor as racist and is perfectly fine with being openly racist. So I'm not going to like put that one on you guys, but that is certainly something that we're going to work at, even if we're just changing the climate and getting him, whether he resigns, doesn't run for reelection, we can get a strong opponent to go against him. We are going to start a petition, moving towards asking for his resignation, but we can't change the system while we have such a, such a visible leader that has so much power, who has no problem saying the things he said. And so those are kind of our first wave of actions. We recognize that this is, this is a marathon. This is going to be for the long haul. And so this isn't by any means a conclusive list. This is what we believe is step one. And we think that the best way to move forward is have a meeting with the mayor, city manager, and chief of police, and maybe meet with the full council in a work session when you have more time to have more dialogue. We thought that July 21st looked like a good time for a work session meeting with you all, if that worked with you. And I want to thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Sophia. Thank you for your comments.
The next one is Cersei Stumbo at 339 Pheasant Avenue.
Hello, thank you. I appreciate you having us on today. I've been here in Marion for five years now, after 15 years in Iowa City. I'm from Iowa originally, lived in Washington, DC for 14 years in between there. So I'm quite proud to call Marion my home, and really wanted to say that the work we're doing with the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity is work really intended to be proactive. We want to make sure that what you are able to do as a city council, what your commissions, including the Civil Rights Commission, are able to do, as well as what we're able to do community-wide, is to take proactive action to become a better, more welcoming and inclusive place in which people of color in particular can thrive. So I think the key here is that while it is important that we have systems where individuals can file complaints when they have been wronged, that we can't rely on that to be the place we get most of our information about who we are as a community. We have to be proactive and go out and find more information based on what we see all over the area, all over the state, and all over the country related to race and racial equity. So we really do strongly encourage that we ask about the kinds of data that we know are significant and that we use those data as we make decisions, that we really spend a lot of time understanding the nature of implicit bias. That, that really is likely to be the very most significant work we have to do in our community, is to understand the nature of bias and how to overcome systemic, systemic implicit bias. And then finally, that we have to really be careful to not take a deficit approach to thinking about people of color in our community and people of color who work in our community. Really is, this is about having a community get better, not necessarily that we somehow have to help other people to get better, that we have to give them services, but rather that we have to change and improve. So as a white member of our community, as an accomplice in the work, I'm proud to be here. I'm pleased that we've been able to meet with the mayor. We look forward, we will be reaching out to the mayor and the city manager and the police chief to meet with them. As Sophia said, we think it would be appropriate to meet with you during a work session to get kind of specific about those components of our demands that really do relate to city work. We'll be doing the same at the county level, we'll be doing the same at the state level, we'll be doing the same community-wide. So we're here, we're ready to push, we're pleased that what we've been hearing from many members of the community is they're ready to change, and figuring out how to do that together is the mission that we have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Cersei, thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Anna Clymer at 2475 McGowan Boulevard.
Anna, go ahead. Anna, are you out there?
Unmute. Okay, there. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, this is Anna Clymer. I live on McGowan Boulevard, and I've lived in Marion for about 16 years. I am also a member of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity Steering Committee, and I thank you for having us take a stand in this moment of urgency in regards to racial equity nationally, but certainly in our backyards as well. I work in social service roles in Lynn County, Cedar Rapids, Marion areas, but also around other cities and counties across the state in seeing disproportionality and disparity in multiple systems. So I work for Marion most of the time, especially now in COVID times, but also in Des Moines and Ames within child welfare and work to address training, learning, and addressing disproportionality and disparity specifically in child welfare. So one of the main things with the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity is bringing that focus home to really address it here. As I've said, I've lived here for about 16 years and can honestly speak to a lot of family members who are Mexican-American background and friends, as well as I am Salvadoran-born and was really warned about moving into this community in regards to even buying a home here. And I have to say that I've had pretty positive experiences with our neighborhood. It has definitely changed since I've moved in, as far as turnover from older generation to younger families, as I live close to a school. But I think in this work and in these conversations that have been having and been happening across the community, being able to focus on those six initial recommendations or proposed demands that we have are really critical in order to build a more inclusive community for not just for black and people of color in our community, but certain LGBTQ youth, renters, homeowners, whoever it is that wants to build community here in Marion. As Cersei referenced, it's important to be data-informed, but certainly taking into account people's experiences. We've had several marches in the community, including the one on Monday, where people who have rented or lived here have chosen or have been felt like they've had to leave in order to really experience a greater sense of safety and security. And I think that's heartbreaking for a lot of neighbors to hear, but I think important, it's not just about the numbers, it's also about the experience of those that have felt like they can't call this home the way that I or others have been able to as a person of color. So being able to just emphasize, we hope to walk in partnership with the city council, with the Civil Rights Commission, with other alliances in the community that really want to move forward together and really address inequities, not just within law enforcement, but also within health, education, and mental health services, social services, everywhere that we can find inequities. I think it's worth assessing and addressing right here at home in our backyard. So I hope that we can walk in lockstep and see what we can do better together in order to truly represent the community we say we want to have, even in reflection of the mayor's proclamation on the Marion page in regards to the spray painting of the N-word at a neighbor's home, considering that it's really easy for us to stand in a space to say, I am against that. But when it comes to the small microaggressions and biases and stereotyping that occurs day to day, we don't take that strong of a stance. And I think it's critical that we all learn together to do better together and ally along the lines of people of color and those underrepresented in our community and in leadership in our city and other organizations that are here in the community.
Okay, Anna, thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Angelica Venada, 2600 Copper Drive.
Angelica, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, Rachel, city council and city staff on this call today. My name is Angelica Veneta. I have lived in Iowa for nearly my entire life, and I have had the opportunity to raise a family in the same house on the south side of Marion for 20-plus years. I come from a racially and culturally diverse family and am also a person of color. I know many of you, and you know my stories. As some of you might know, I've served a three-year term as a Marion Civil Rights Commissioner. During that time, I also initiated and led the creation of Marion's Low and Moderate Income Housing Assistance Grant in its first year. And I say all that really just to provide context for my public comment in support of the work of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. It has always been important to me that the community that I call home be wholly dedicated to improving the lives of others, but also creating positive social change. And I believe that the alliance is committed to the same. I think that there is a misconception in our community that we don't have a race issue, but that's simply not true. I can personally share stories that my own children have faced in the schools, and certainly my own experiences, which can be echoed by so many other black American residents in Marion. While we may not have blatant racists, although a quick read through social media would tell you otherwise, it's no longer enough to not be racist. I believe that Marion must actively be anti-racist so that we can create a space where our black and brown residents feel safe, seen, and heard. I know that the Marion- I know that the Marion City Council and staff and the Civil Rights Commission have made strides in creating a more inclusive and welcoming community. And I've certainly been a part of that with my own work on the Civil Rights Commission, but there is more work to be done. As others have mentioned already, addressing systemic racism in our community goes much further than just outreach and awareness. It's going to require us addressing policies and practices in our education, our criminal justice, and our healthcare systems, but also within business and certainly personally, what's most important to me is within our housing. I believe that the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity is positioned to lead and inform the city council on these issues of racial inequities with some data-driven solutions. And I hope that the city council will listen, reflect, and act to affect real change and create a space for generational families of color in our community. Thank you for your time.
Angelica, thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Brett Niles, 6090 Stagsley Lane, and he is a member of the Civil Rights Commission.
Well, good evening. My name is Brett Nellis, as we mentioned, at 6090 Stagsley Lane in Marion. A member of the Marion Civil Rights Commission. And I just wanted to let the council know that we were able to meet with the Steering Committee for Marion Alliance for Social Change last night in our regular monthly meeting. It was a great opportunity for us to be able to hear their stories and their concerns. I think it is important that they came forward, and we really do appreciate it in terms of the amount of time and effort that they're putting forward into trying to make Marion a better place to live for everyone. They talked about, we talked about the demands and with recognizing that there are areas that we can work together on to make Marion more welcoming and a better place to live for everyone. Several of these demands are beyond our reach, but we wanted to make sure that we continue the communication and the discussion and dialogue between the Marion Civil Rights Commission and the city council and the Marion Alliance for Social Change. As was mentioned, there have been a couple incidents within Marion lately that are not reflective of what the majority of the population is like. And also in terms of the activity, in terms of the numbers of events that have occurred that we need to make sure that we're all aware of. I think it's wonderful that we have such an energetic group to come forward, and I hope you get an opportunity to learn more about them and to open up this discussion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Next, we have Steve Shriver, Marion business owner of Ecolips.
Hello. Hi, everybody. Thanks for, thanks for including me in your call here. Thank you, mayor, and council, and police chief for all you've done. I actually have a lot of respect for what you've accomplished in the last few years, although I do believe that we have a lot of work to do. When we moved to, we moved from Cedar Rapids as a business to, and I'm a former, former Marion resident, and, but we moved our business from Cedar Rapids to Marion. We have a number of black employees, and the, the, the conversation that we had was really challenging and uncomfortable at that time. And it was the first time that I had heard DWB, which was, they were concerned about being pulled over on their way to work for driving while black. And, and, and so for me to force them to, put them in a position where they may be pulled over, I actually told them if, if they get a ticket that was unwarranted, I would pay it. I want you to know that, that again, I appreciate what you do for a living and, and elected officials, it is your job to help us, help us in this cause. I stand with the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. Brett, you just mentioned for racial, sorry, for, you weren't using the word equity. It's very important that we don't drop that word. We've been blessed with a lot of equity in our lives as white people, and we need to share that equity with the black people in our community. And I will end with, you know, hoping that we can all work together for this positive change, but also know that people around the world right now are, they're, they are marching for us. This is the time, and I'm, I'm asking you to not have, you know, to not form committees and meetings and, and take a long time in, 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 in a vacuum to make these decisions. I'm asking you to, to take action quickly and be inclusive and include the, the alliance in your decision-making, include them in the strategy work. I would be happy to be a part of that if you think that I could add value. And if not, most of all, include the black people in the community in these decisions. They are the least heard in these decisions, and you can see that we white people are standing up for them because their voice is not being heard right now. So please include the black people of Marion in your conversations, and, and let's create this change together. Again, thank you so much for all of your hard work, and, and let's, let's do this, guys.
Steve, thank you for your comments.
I have no other, nobody else waiting to comment, so that was everyone.
So nobody else to make any comments regarding the public forum?
Correct.
Let me add a couple of my comments at the, at the end here now. Again, the city council cannot take action on any comments that we did here tonight. But one thing I can say from a personal standpoint is I've been a citizen of Marion since 1962, so I have seen a tremendous amount of change in this city. I also anticipate to see a lot more change in the remaining time that I continue to live in Marion, which I hope to be a long time yet. The city of Marion strives to be inclusive. We will continue to have that as our goal, but we also understand there is always room for improvement. Our mayor wants us to reach higher, and we will try to do that. The city is willing to look for ways to be a better community for all of our citizens and our visitors. From a personal standpoint, I would prefer that the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity changes verbiage as Sophia suggested and not call it demands. To me, that's a confrontational term. I liked her verbiage where she was calling them action steps. Action steps or items for discussion or concerns, to me, starts off on the right foot for everybody concerned. So the Marion Alliance group has already met with our Civil Rights Commission, as a few of you already indicated. So those meetings will continue to occur, as well as we were, so we will certainly explore other ways to continue the dialogue. With that, we will close the public forum. And we will move on to council comments. Start with Colette.
Perfect. Just to follow up to, you know, really appreciating the folks stepping forward tonight and providing voice, and I think doing it in a way which makes us all want to work together. I did want to highlight that a couple of weeks ago, the mayor and myself did meet with a few of these folks that are a part of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity, and really walked away, from my perspective, with a, with a desire for us to continue to work together collaboratively, continue to have conversations, figure out how we can, how we can reach better, how we can do better in the community. So I think that's important for folks to know. And then secondly, I did, myself and the city manager, were at the event on Monday and were listening to the folks there and the things that they were sharing. And I thought that was very insightful, too, so just wanted to make those comments. I think sometimes folks don't know that there are some things happening, and I wanted to make sure that our community knew that we, as elected officials, were listening and, and trying to do our best work in representing the community that we live in, so.
Okay, thanks, Colette. Well, Grant.
Hearing the comments this evening impressed on me that this is really going to end up being a journey. And I'm going to use a phrase that I'm kind of fond of, a journey of continuous improvement with the right focus to improve the condition of Marion. I am gratified, as a 40-year-plus resident of Marion, I am gratified to feel that we certainly don't have the gravity of problems that other communities have, but that in no way is to suggest that we are perfect. I think, to be honest, there are, there are always opportunities to improve. So I appreciate the comments this evening, and I really think that we position this as a cooperative effort and seek to reach common ground. We'll benefit the city, so thank you.
Okay, Renee.
Sorry, couldn't find my unmute. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of what everyone else is saying. I, I have to say, when I saw a lot of people in attendance to speak at the comment, you know, at the public forum, and normally, we really don't have anyone particularly while we've been zooming. And so obviously, this is important. People came, you waited through the meeting to speak. Kind of like Steve said, when you hear the word demand, it already kind of draws this line in the sand. So I was nervous about the tone and how that would come across tonight, but I'm super heartened by everyone's tone, the sentiment, the heartfelt comments, the organization itself. I'm, I'm proud that Marion now has this alliance. We obviously need it. Several of your action items seem particularly prudent, and I, I look forward to learning more, being a part of that conversation. No one should live in a community where they don't feel welcome. I don't know what that feels like, but I certainly want to have empathy for those who do and, and make change. I mean, that's why, for me personally, that's why I love service. I've done it in a variety of committees and things along the year, the years, but I feel like city council really gives a role where we can make changes. And so I look forward to being a part of that process and to learning more. And I'm going to steal Grant's word, journey, because, you know, we can only help insofar as we know that there's an issue. So just being more open to listening and being exposed to what's out there. I've only lived in Marion for a decade or so. And I, I lived in Atlanta, and I lived in northern Virginia. I was born in DC. I lived in New Jersey. My husband is not American. You know, I get this whole diversity and the, and the lack of it, particularly in Iowa when compared to other areas. I actually left Georgia because of the racism there, and I worked in a corporation where, as Mr. Shriver indicated, the employees there who would go out to the home health agencies, who, the, the black employees didn't want to go too far away from Atlanta and go to the counties because they were afraid. And that's, that's a terrible thing in this day and age. So I just want to say that I look forward to being a part of this change, and I really appreciate everyone's, just their sentiment. I mean, it's, it's all heart, there's no, you know, I'm sure people, obviously, I'm angry, too, but I'm glad that we're having this discussion civilly because I do think that will help us move more swiftly all toward the common goal that I think we share about equity. So thanks for taking the time tonight, for forming this group and putting the time into it. And I look forward to helping however I can.
Okay, we certainly at this time want to thank everybody that gave, that made comments during the public forum and also for the well-founded comments by the city council. So at this time, we have a closed session. Grant.
Your honor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding land acquisition as permitted under Section 21.51J of the Code of Iowa.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to adjourn the closed session. Can we have our attorney's statement, please?
Yes, I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code Section 21.51J.
Okay, roll call, vote.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Goodelia?
Yes.
At this time, we will move into closed session. Our open meeting is now closed temporarily. Thank you.